Good evening. Today is September the 3rd, 2019. I want to thank you guys for being here this evening. Our thought for today. All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence. That's by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Our pastor of tonight couldn't make it tonight, but we have a special treat for you guys. We're going to ask our county clerk, Mr. Jackie, if she would pray for us tonight. Yeah, so if you would, ma'am, please pray for us tonight.
Thank you so much. Would you bow your heads, please? Our Father, we're so grateful tonight that we can come before the King of Kings, knowing that even in 2019, you're still here and answer prayer. We thank you, oh God, for the mighty hand that you reached forth and you're able to calm the stormy seas, and we ask you to do that tonight, Lord. In those places that they're going through such perilous times, Lord, we ask you to please be with the people, keep your sweet hand upon them, and bring them through. And Father God, we thank you for everybody that's here, and we ask you to bless them and to bless their homes. May we ever have ears to hear what you have to say to us, Lord. We ask you, oh God, to bless our county commissioners, our staff, those of us that work for you and work for these wonderful people. We pray, oh God, that you would give our commissions the mind, the wisdom, the discernment, whatever they need to make the right decisions for your people. We thank you, oh God, for your love and your mercy, and we ask these things in the wonderful name of sweet Jesus. Amen.
Amen, amen. We're going to ask Commissioner Mason, if he would, lead us along, please. Our next we have is our agenda adoption. Tonight, I want to take the opportunity to remove item number D on the consent agenda. Item D. Item D. We're going to take an opportunity now to ask if you would, silence and your phones tonight, please. Our commissioners, any questions? I seek a motion that we approve.
I move for approval of the adoption of the agenda with the removal of item D.
Thank you. It has been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. Next is old business, number six, our neighborhood stabilization program. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have had communications with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and they have committed personnel to working with us on this project so that we can close it out and without the assistance of a consultant. So there, but we left it on here so that we could inform the board of that. So we will not need to be asking for any money from the contingency fund in order to complete this, and we'll be able to close it out with their assistance.
So do we need a motion to work with?
I don't believe you'll need to take any action on this.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Nick, I'm sorry, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if it was appropriate time. How much money do we have in the contingency?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have an estimated amount of money or do we have any contingency?
Contingency, I believe, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe it's approximately $600,000.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Our next is animal control, senior centers and senior services purchase seeks approval. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had asked that this contract be tabled until this meeting in order for county attorneys to finish their review on certain aspects of that contract, and it's ready for your consider, it is approved for your consideration. And this is to engage Sun Belt builders as a design builder firm for the animal control building as well as for the senior services expansion. And also, they have also submitted a separate budget or a separate item for $135,000 for recreation department to do a small expansion on the gym at Turner Lake. We would ask that you approve this contract, and we can begin moving ahead with those projects.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is number seven, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to come up and make comments on agenda topics only, agenda topics only. You have three minutes. Please come up and state your name and your address for the record, please. You may do so at this time. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next, we have the chairman's report. I have a special guest with us today, Mr. Tanaud Turner from the direct director. He's going to come and present to us and let us know what they got, what they have going on over at direct department. Sir, if you would, please come at this time. Mr. Duane is with him as well. Guys, thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I would like to thank the chairman for allowing the commission to come up and speak on things that has have been happening over the last nine to 10 months in terms of the red commission. It's a pleasure to be here today to talk about it. In those folders that Duane passed out, it's just a presentation I want to bring your attention to, and I'll start off by saying this, I think about nine to 10 months ago, I stood before you and told you that we were ready to work, and since then, we've done, we've done a lot. At that particular time, we were, at that particular time, we were, we were two divisions. We were parks and we were rec. Since then, we have established a youth development department. It's an entire division and it's devoted to after-school, summer camp programs, literacy programs, reading programs for our kids. My responsibility is to ensure that all the citizens, all the kids of Noon County are part of this program. We need after-school, we need summer camp programs. I think we're excelling in sports, but we need that, that youth development component. So since then, we have developed that youth development division, so therefore, we are the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Youth Development. Before you is just, the divisions broke down. Some of our focus points in terms of parks and rec, I won't read them verbatim, but those are the things that we're focused on in those, in those areas. Those are like our pillars, so you can read through that at your leisure. I only have 15 minutes, the chairman told me, so I'm trying to go through this. So our vision and mission statement is together we are one due by connecting and enriching a community through exceptional experiences, best-in-class parks, and enhancing the quality of life of citizens. Of course, I am a quality of life champion, so if you notice, I highlighted the quality of life, and that's what we are. We are champions with the Noon County Red Commission. Also, this is just an overview in terms of the acreage, things that we oversee and facilitate. The parks do, crew do a great job in terms of maintaining the Wolverine Rec Center, Turner Lake. We have over 12 parks. We cut over 520 acres, so this is just kind of overview of the department. You can read through that later. Quality of life, this is our contribution to the strategic plan, which is important. Of course, we're quality of life champions. We provide health and wellness program for the citizens of Noon County. We actually just did the opening ceremony for the B.C. Carr Cardio Fitness Studio. We're going to add a yoga studio, hopefully, to begin in the next year. That's an extension to what we're doing, our health and wellness component. We just did a great, we partnered with DNR to do a kids wild like that. We had about, about 200 kids there. That was absolutely amazing, our first one, so we're doing great things with those. We also have what we call professional development days, and those are days where teachers are getting professional development. School is not in session. So when school is not in session, the kids can be dropped over, off at Turner Lake from 7:00 to 6:30, and giving the kids a safe place to go. So that's our initiative to make sure kids are safe when school is out, so we're doing that. They have one in November and one in January, so we're doing that as well. We also have, the dog park is under construction. Hopefully, it'll be ready next month. I'm hoping I have my fingers crossed, so we're 80% done with that. These are a couple of our goals. I won't go through those. We have seven that we, we focus on, so I won't go through those. I'll allow y'all to read that at your leisure. These are some of our focus areas. We have what we call direct services. These are services that we do in-house. We don't outsource, we don't have, we don't use any associations. So our rec staff do a great job. We do youth basketball, youth football, cheerleading, softball. We have the Miracle League, we do karate. And then we have, of course, on the park side, we do facility maintenance, prevention maintenance, equipment repair, and then we do outsourced like the pet control and some of our facility renovations, so you can read through that as well. This is all the programs that we do, all the new programs that we started since, over the last five months. We have yoga, ultimate boot camp. We have, we just started our nutrition classes, personal training, Zumba, track and field. Track and field was great, this is our first year doing that. We had about 14 kids signed up for that, so that was awesome. Pilco ball. We actually have a bike trail that was, I think we were featured in the Noon County magazine that we're doing. Of course, the cardio fitness studio. We had a teen three-on-three Friday night basketball, which was, we had about 65 kids in that. Friday night skills and drills, and of course, we have the yoga studio that's an extension to the B.C. Carr Cardio Fitness Studio coming up, hopefully, January, February, FY20. This is the dog park. Again, we believe in quality of life of our animals as well, so we want to make sure they, they get a chance to play in a, in a secure space. So we have what we call agility equipment for the kid, the dogs to go out, run through these little mini obstacle courses, things of that nature. So again, it's about 1,000 square feet or more, so hopefully, it'll be open. Like I said, they're, they're nearing completion, so we hope to have a, a ceremony sometime over the next 30 days. This is the Okeo Splash Pad. We've had some obstacles as it relates to some permits with the contractor. We're probably about a month or so behind on that, but these are the hours of operation. I'm not sure right now where they are. I think they just have to pour the cement, and I was hoping to, to get, allow the kids to have some time before it starts getting cold, but we're, we're there, and I've been communicating with the commission about that. So I do apologize. We wanted to do the 4th of July weekend, but we're on the way. We're headed in the right direction. Our partnership, these are important because these, these are an extension of the youth development component. We partnered with VIT, which is very important, teens, and what they try to do, they try to, it's an initiative to get kids involved. We want teens to stay involved, so we have a number of programs that we're going to be partnering with them. They're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so in the near future, we're going to be doing some, some great things with their teens. I think right now, they have 175 teens that have come out and will do some things with them as well. This is another partnership we started with a referee association. When I first came aboard, I was getting a lot of complaints about our referees not being, you know, caught game management and things of that nature. So what we did, Duane and I, we went out and formed a partnership, and we wanted an incredible association to come in so we can manage the games, and that was important. So we partnered with these guys. They actually just started tonight, and everything is going according to plan. Secondly, our second partnership, this is a huge partnership. I'm excited about this partnership because it's going to lead to great things. We just recently partnered with the Hawks. You see, those are mark, markups of the uniforms, junior Hawks program. All of our youth in our basketball league will be wearing these uniforms, tops and bottoms. The kids would also be allowed to go out at halftime at some of the games. They'll get tickets to the game, a voucher with the parents and the kids to go out and see some of the games. So this is huge because I'm hoping they'll do a camp next year, and that will lead to them doing a couple of basketball courts in Noon County. So this was a huge partnership for us. I want to bring your attention to this. This is, this is important information from GRPA. I wanted to, I wanted to you to see this slide because I wanted to show you where we are compared to other agencies. And these are, the populations are guesstimates. I think Noon County has a little bit more than 107,000, but this is basically where we are compared to other counties. Oconee County has 39,000, City of South Fulton about 95,000, Bartow County 106. These are the number of employees in the second, third column and the number of rec centers. As you can see, based on our population and GRPA standards, we are, we are, based on what you see, we're kind of behind, based on their population compared to ours. We have one rec center, whereas if you take Oconee County, they have 39,000 residents, and they have two. South Fulton has 95, and they have four, and a auditorium. This slide is very important just to kind of show, show you that I feel like we're, we're under service in the community of Noon County. We have to, we, we could be, we could be the next Gwinnett, we could be the next Marietta. I think we're just, I, I want to see us grow, and I think we're there, but this just shows you, Tiff County has 41,000. They have two rec centers and an aquatic center, and we need an aquatic center. Our kids want to swim as well, so that's important, that we get an aquatic center at some point. But I wanted to show you this slide as well. The next slide is from the NRPA, and it kind of breaks down the standard, what organizations should be. And if you notice, typically, there are eight, eight, 8.3 full-time employees for every 10,000 residents. We currently have 15. We should have about 80. So just Steve Carter is the executive director of GRPA, NRPA. He gave me this information. It's on the internet. So we really should have 80, 89, based on the population. If you look at the number of playgrounds, we have 10. One playground for every 3,706 residents. If you look at the rec centers, 30,000 residents in every county. We, we currently have 109 and counting. People are moving to Newt County from Atlanta. Atlanta is hot. They're coming. We have to be prepared. My job is to get us prepared. If you look at the number, one park per 2,000, we currently have 12. Again, we have 109,000 residents in county. Agency usually spends 6,750 per acre. If we have 500 acres, we should be, we should, the appropriation should be a little bit higher than where it is. So this slide just kind of shows you where we are compared to the, just standard, where we should be. And again, my responsibility is make, make sure that citizens of Noon County are getting the same services that Gwinnett County is getting, and that's, that's my job. So I just want to bring that to the forefront to just make sure that, are we really serving the community? That we have, at some point, we have to get there, because right now, we're, we're just not there. And that concludes my presentations. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. Commissioners, do you have any questions, please, or Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the first thing, I, I just, just, just wanted to, I guess, everybody already know, because I kind of made it known, that the rec center and Turner Lake and, and the others, they all in District 4. Makes you know, and so we've been working a lot of years to kind of make, hopefully, the best in the United States of, of America. I know there was a lot of, that you spoke about, making free, because of Mr. Chairman's report, you spoke about, are they going to be for the other, the other programs? Are they going to be, what are the charges for the other programs? Because I know we, we charge football, we charge baseball. They're going to be charged now to Okeo at some point for, for the Splash Pad, and so what, what are the other charges that we're going to be charging?
In terms of the youth development side of it? Now, we, we, we will have a charge. It will be minimum. We're, we're, we're not revenue-driven, we're service-driven. So one of the things we want to do, we want to look at other agencies like Rockdale County, DeKalb County, and things of that nature to make sure we're charging. As, 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 we want to make sure that people can afford our services. We had, we do have scholarships available and things of that nature, so we do have that in place.
Absolutely. And so, you know, I said that, just, just to say this, is that I think at some point, this board is going to have to look at maybe a mill or whatever it takes in order to run our recreation facility. Because I think one of the things that we need is not to charge our children, any child, because it keeps them off the street. And I agree with, but Mr. B.C. Crowe once said, when we were in his lifetime, and we were talking, we see, he'd rather see a child, a boy, a girl playing to rec than running around out here in the streets doing who knows what. And so I think that it's, and there was a commitment that I'm trying to keep to a friend. And lastly, District 4, man, and I want the other district commission to come on with their funding. We contribute $50,000 to the, to the B.C. Crowe Exercise Room, what I call it, or whatever Mr. Turner may want to call it. And because, first of all, because we, we remember him, he was a great man, and he did volumes for, for recreation. In fact, I believe he needs, there needs to be a statue of him out at the recreation center somewhere in the yard where people can, can, can see what his vision was in the future. And I say this, and to get a little bit off course, they also need to go down to the, in the Muthaw County Park Facebook and, and put one of Dave's morgues out there too as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tanaud. It was a very good report. I know that a lot of people always ask about a pool or an aquatic center. Our next SLOST will be in 2023, and I would encourage you to work now to start having some type of survey or report that indicates how we can put that SLOST, put, fund, appropriately fund an aquatic center, not just partially fund an aquatic center, which is something that we tend to do a lot with our SLOST. We, we, we get too many items on the SLOST so that we get buy-in from the voters, but then we don't adequately fund a project. And so I would also encourage you to work with the SLOST, the current SLOST committee to, to plan for that particular SLOST so that we can get that on that 2023 SLOST.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason? I got, we got three minutes left, though. We got to go to zoning at 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Phenomenal, phenomenal presentation, Tanaud.
Thank you, sir.
I am thoroughly, thoroughly impressed with what I see currently going on with your leadership and your team. You guys are doing an amazing job. You're doing great things. Yes, Denny Dobbs Park, the Splash Pad isn't quite done just yet, but we are very, very close, and we are very excited about having our very first Splash Pad in Noon County. I think this is the beginning of a lot of great things, as you mentioned before, so we're really, really excited about that, and I just want to encourage you guys to keep doing what you're doing. I will definitely continue to have more and more meetings and conversations with you and your team to kind of really see where I can help in whatever capacity that I can as well. And I was going to ask too, I know you mentioned the dog park, but I don't know if we stated where it's going to be located. Is it at Turner?
My apologies. It's actually at Turner Lake. It's actually at Turner Lake. And hopefully, we'll, we'll have that ceremony within the next three weeks. Yes, sir.
Thank you guys so much once again, and I appreciate everything that you guys have done and all of the data and keeping me abreast on everything that's going on with the Splash Pad. It's been phenomenal, and so thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, we got two minutes. Anyone want to, anyone coming? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. You're doing a wonderful job as always. Keep up the good work. I think the future of our, our recreation center is really bright, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Long as we're going to get back to you after this zoning. Going to go ahead and go into zoning at 7:29 by the time Ms. Judy gets up here. It'll be 7:30. As she go, take a slow stroll as she come up. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Judy, for being here.
Thank you. And just to wrap up the last 30 seconds, I do want to let y'all know that as a strategy champion myself, I am championing economic development this evening, as well as the ordinance amendment that we will hear, here is the second case tonight, did allow us an opportunity to work with both Walton County and Morgan County, as well as we worked with the JDA as a whole, which included Jasper County. So we are further increasing our efforts to create and foster great relationships with our local governments. And are we at 7:30? Fantastic. The first item before you this evening is a conditional use permit request. This is CUP 19-00003. This is a proposed commercial child daycare center. The location is going to be Suite 67 and 69 Crowell Road. The size of the parcel is 3.45 acres, and it is currently in Tier 2 of the Almond Overlay. Here shows the property identified in blue, and it shows the green, which will indicate our Almond Overlay. It is right north of the intersection of Brown Bridge Road on Crowell Road. That's another overview of the property itself and kind of shows you the other developments that is, that is around this property. This is a strip mall. It was not originally designed to, for a daycare center, and there are some items that came up during the planning commission that I would like to go over with you this evening. Again, this where the red line show is the proposed units 67 and 69 Crowell Road. The planning commission, the case was first brought before the planning commission on June 25th, and at that meeting, the planning commission chose to table it to allow the applicants to gather some additional information. And it was reheard again at the July 23rd planning commission meeting, in which the planning commission recommended denying unanimously the petition for the following concerns: traffic in the area without the proper traffic calming devices, specifically a left turn lane and the alignment of Crowell Road and Brown Bridge Road; the parking at the current facility; the intensity of the existing uses within the strip mall; the location of the play area requires crossing a truck loading zone; the trash receptacle area; and the overall development of the property. This property was built out and developed before our current development regulations. It does not have any stormwater detention area. It was also built on a septic system, which will further limit some of the use of the property. Additional information received from the applicant. Because we were, and thank y'all for the holiday yesterday, and for everyone who made Labor Day possible, but because of the holiday yesterday, we were not able to meet back with the applicants. They had provided us some additional information at the end of last week to consider. So we were able to meet this morning with both the applicants, and some items came up that staff has not had the time to properly address, but two of the changes this evening is that they have updated a plan that would move the pickup and drop-off locations to the rear of the building. I was able to talk with our fire marshal briefly, and he did indicate that this would not be allowable because that is a fire lane in the rear of the building, and we could not at any time have that lane blocked for pickups or drop-offs. And the other information that the applicants have, have shared with us is that they do have the second suite now, and that they would like to further expand into a third suite, should it be. should it become available at the beginning of next year. And we have not evaluated what that additional number would do, um, for traffic or any of the other concerns on the property. So, I do want to let you know that while this is additional new information, we real, staff has not had the opportunity today to revise this petition. Um, other considerations for you to also take, uh, uh, into mind is that there is a total of fifteen suites in this plaza. There are currently nine businesses in actually eleven suites, not twelve, um, which include a sit-down restaurant, a barber shop, a hair salon, a nail salon, a place of worship, a tax service, a pet grooming shop, an insurance company, and a tanning salon. There are a total of seventy-four parking spaces on the property. By ordinance, we should have ninety-four. You can do some shared parking, but I do not know that shared parking necessarily, again, would accommodate for the twenty additional spaces that are needed. And because this property is so developed, I do not know where they would be able to add twelve more spaces. Um, there's, uh, the, uh, the fenced playground area is also at the rear of the building and I've got a picture for that, um, to show you in just a moment, which again, there, the children would have to go with their staff across a truck loading z- lane or the fire lane to get from the building into the play area. Um, the applicant also has indicated that, uh, the state would allow for thirty-three children. Um, now, we did not call right from the start to confirm that, but I do know it's based on the square footage, the number of children that you have, the age groups of the children and so forth. Um, however, due to the septic system, the State Environmental Health Department has limited the total number of occupants and staff, total number, staff and children, to twenty-two per suite. So, regardless if the state would allow more, the septic would control, which vice versa, if the septic allowed more and the state did not, whichever is the most restrictive will be the one that controls. Um, and then staff visited the property, uh, back in July. There was the fenced area. At the time, we noted that the gate had not, uh, been fixed. They have sent, since, sent proof that the gate has been repaired for the play area. And then the other thing is the refuse area on site. Um, this is a, uh, structure that has been built. I, I'm not exactly sure when. We do not see it in the twenty sixteen aerials. However, it is currently there and it was not built to the overlay standards. It's kind of flimsy. Um, it also has where you can't secure the trash in it. And because this is a public petition in front of the board, we can put conditions on this. Actually, any new business coming into the property could have conditions placed on it to do some types of repair just because it's disservice. Now, granted, they're not the only ones using the trash receptacle, but any new use will increase that and therefore put it back into where our regulations can take over. Um, and then let me go through a handful of pictures, um, because I know we have a large agenda this evening. This is the front. Uh, most of these are, well, the first picture is of the front. The back is of the rear of the building and this would, uh, be where the children are going to be coming across the rear and entering into the gated area. The picture in the bottom, um, right-hand corner is the road that comes up to their trash receptacle, the actual, uh, structure that they've been, built around their trash receptacle. And again, not the applicants, but on the property is backwards. Uh, it does service where the truck can come in off of Brown Bridge Road, but the people actually carrying their trash out to put it into these receptacles are having to open a door, put the trash in. If they leave the trash sitting out in the, uh, area, when the dumpster comes, they're just dumping what's inside the container. They're not going to pick up the additional bags. And staff has on more than one occasion noticed that there is a lot of refuse not being managed in the area. Um, this is some pictures of the trash receptacle, um, and the, uh, kind of you can see the structure itself. And that is a condition of the, should it be approved, there would have to be improvements made to this trash receptacle area. Um, this is the, uh, applicant's layout here of their, initially, they had showed us the slide that's to your left-hand side. And that's before they knew that the other suite, which has now become available. Now, they are wanting to move forward with both suites. So, that would be the updated site plan to your right there, showing both suites and the different, uh, classrooms that they would have. And again, this morning, we were made aware that there may even be a third suite. So, we want to thoroughly review this for the applicants if they do want to expand into that third unit. Um, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you a question. Um, so you saying staff hasn't had an opportunity to go back over the changes?
Not since we met with the applicants this morning. And now that we're going from, first, there was one suite with possibly moving into a second suite. Now, we know the second suite is available and now they have a third suite that adjoins this that they would like to consider expanding into. And that was too new a change. The planning commission was not aware at all of the additional suite being added to it.
So, so, so my question is, do y'all still, you still want to present tonight or?
Um, well, it's been advertised, um, to be heard. There is, if I can forward through to my recommendations, um, there is, our conclusion from staff would either be to uphold the planning commission's recommendation and deny the application or, um, table it for staff to have further review or you do have by ordinance where you can remand this back to the planning commission and allow them to go over all of the changes that have been presented since their meeting.
I think I'm asking, uh, Commissioner Schultz if she will actually table, I mean, because it, it's not really, I don't think.
There's, yes, so there's been a lot of changes from the planning commission.
So, what I prefer to do is remand it back to the planning commission and allow them time to look at all the changes that have been made. Since it is a conditional use permit, do we still have to hear from the applicant or can we remand it at this point?
Because we have advertised a public hearing, we have to open the hearing and allow the applicant to be heard and then any that are not in support. Then when it becomes time for the board to vote, uh, the motion would be put forward as you just indicated to send it back to the planning commission for further review and to table until you receive the planning commission's decision.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, this is approximately seven forty-two. We're gonna, uh, at this time, we're gonna open up our public hearing tonight for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor of this. Uh, you have ten minutes to do so. Uh, you may come at this time. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor of this.
Good evening.
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 Evening. Good evening.
We're, um...
Guys, guys, hey, let me, let me say this. Uh, you, you do have ten minutes to, to, uh, speak tonight. Uh, but, you know, if, my suggestion is that, uh, you go back to the planning, go back to the planning board and, and, and present your case before them. That's my suggestion. Uh, because I, I was on an offer to have presented a lot of stuff tonight and it's not complete. But, uh, you do have ten minutes to speak tonight if you would like to. So, that's up to you.
Well, Chairman, I would like to speak. I represent the landlord and the property management and the, um, the building was acquired recently and we are trying to reposition the center and get some, uh, better tenants in there and just trying to clean it up. We do have, uh, we've allocated several or a significant amount of capital improvement dollars to improve the facility. Uh, so there are a lot of things that planning and, uh, zoning have brought to our attention that we need to address. And so, we have hired a day porter for the trash receptacle and cleaning. We have been working with Republic Services with our trash, um, services. They've been working very, uh, close with us, so we have cleaned up the area. We are looking to secure it, maybe do some kind of keypad system. So, I just wanted to let the chairman and the commissioners know that we, the landlord and management are, um, on board with making this property, um, getting this property up to, to speed and to guys. Can you give the name?
I'm Mark Seals.
Commissioner Schultz, you have anything you want to say to me?
Thank you for being here. I, I would strongly encourage you to look at the traffic patterns because Crowell Road is increasing the use of children in traffic. And especially with children, I would hope that you will take that very seriously, how you deal with the traffic. So, before you take it back to the planning commission, look at the traffic during those times of days when you, when children will be dropped off and when they will be picked up. It, since you're, uh, agreeable to work on improving that property, take a look at that, please.
Anything else?
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone else would like to speak in favor? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may do so at this time. Please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone want to oppose tonight?
Thomas Buckner, six fifty, please to drive. But I was wondering, if you pass it, how's the kids gonna get across the road, the back alley to the playground? You gonna build about over or under? They still gotta cross that, uh, road back there and there ain't no way they can fix it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to oppose tonight? Thank you. Uh, uh, Commissioner Schultz, I seek a, uh, uh, motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to remand CUP one nine dash zero 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 three back to the planning commission for further evaluation of the amended request.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz that we remand this back, uh, to the planning commission. It's been seconded by, uh, Commissioner Henderson, uh, discretion, so, Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna, um, I think Mr. Buckner kind of touched on what I would have suggested as well. Uh, having a three-year-old currently, uh, in daycare, that playground area would be, um, definitely something I would address and look at, um, to have children cross from the building to the back. Um, to me, a- and I don't know exactly how much loading and unloading takes place behind the location or behind the building. Uh, but I think, to me, that would be a major concern and something to really, uh, consider a way of possibly, if any way possible, reconstruction, reconstructing, um, where that playground area could be. I don't know if there's any other area or somehow reconstruct that. But I think to make it a little bit more safer for the children when they're leaving the building, being able to go to the play area. Uh, so that was really my only concern that I thought would be a great idea to consider as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more, uh, uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. And this is, uh, to staff, Ms. Judy. Is, is there any way that, that the staff could, could address that? And I guess, the, uh, playground issue?
Yes, sir. We can further look into that. The building does not adjoin the grassed area. Um, they have done some striding, but yes, sir, we can further look into and, and hopefully our, um, applicants will be able to provide some information as well. And if I may, while I'm here, I do want the applicants also to recognize this. Had this board denied this, just straight out denied it tonight, it would be a six-month period before anyone could repetition for that property. So, I do appreciate Commissioner Schultz's fault to give them every exhausted effort because by remanding it back, it will have an opportunity to come back in front of this board. And perhaps if, if many of the things have been corrected, if not all, then it may come back with a different look the next time.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Pastor Spies Zero. Go back to the planning commission.
Okay, the next item, um, and trying to keep up the pace this evening. Um, the next item before you is a zoning amendment. And if I may. Our zoning amendment is specifically for one section of our ordinance and that is Division two eighty-five, which is currently known as the multi-county mixed-use business park. And the request is to amend that section only, which is everything that happens in Stanton Springs. This ordinance will be all-inclusive. As I had mentioned before, that both the two other, um, governing bodies, uh, Walton and Morgan have already actually adopted this amendment. And the goal of the amendment is to have all of our language be as consistent as possible. So, when development comes in, whether it's a development that may split lines like Takata, which was formerly Shire, um, we all are regulating and requiring the same items. Um, the, uh, one of the primary changes is that it will no longer be called MCMUV. It will now be called Stanton Springs Business Park. The district will be broken up into two tiers. The one tier will be any of the development of the land that abuts the, uh, Stanton Springs Parkway or Shire Parkway, I believe. I apologize if I got the name wrong. And then the other tier will address the land that's actually on Highway two seventy-eight. And the land on Highway two seventy-eight, it's going to allow a little further, uh, or fuller uses in it which will allow some service industry commercials such as, um, a convenience store or restaurants or a hotel or things that we would not want actually within the Parkway itself because if you've got someone trying to get to their shift out at Takata, we don't want someone who wants to visit the next great restaurant cruising down into the Parkway with them there. Um, it also is going to include a list of prohibited uses. We have allowed uses. We have prohibited uses. And it will also further restrict and take away any right to have any type of residential development within Stanton Springs Parkway. I was able to speak briefly with, um, Paul Freaky with our attorney's office, uh, earlier today. And we actually, you have in front of you that I passed out, which is, it, it's what I'll call a clean version, but if you'll look, on each of the pages, I've got a couple of yellow and green. What Paul and I did was read back over this cold and we found that there was a couple of places that we just needed to make some cleaner language. It doesn't change the intent of the ordinance. It just helps further explain. Like on page two, um, we're, uh, replacing the word "within" with the word "abutting." We're also further defining where Tier One is. On the next page, Tier Three, we are simply adding prohibited in Tier Two. Um, on page four, under the prohib- Um, on page four, under the prohibited uses, we are changing it to have more legalese with notwithstanding to the use tables above, the following uses are prohibited in tier one and tier two. Our attorney's office, where the other attorney's office may not have thought this necessary, um, our attorneys really wanted to make sure that we defined where, what those prohibited uses were and where they would be located at. Um, the next change is on page six, uh, just simply adding the word below. On page seven, we have, changed it to the issuing authorities requirement. Page eight, we have taken out, uh, we have redefined, we have taken out like for if, for each fifty feet of street frontage for trees, we thought that that didn't, does that mean you need a six-foot tree every fifty feet? Or if you had three hundred feet of road frontage, would you need a thirty-six-foot tree? So again, it's just taken out and cleaning up some language where it just didn't make sense. Um, page nine, we've changed, uh, the joint development authority actually does not have any, um, authority over the Board of Commissioners. So we had to take that out and put in the words, the local issuing authority. And then the last page, um, is simply, uh, changing it to read the full name Stanton Springs Business Park District and taking out the word "authority" so there's not any confusion and inserting the JDA in its place. If you have any questions, we'll be, I'll be happy to answer that. Um, like I said, this was working with both the JDA and our other two, um, governments who have already adopted the language.
Thank you, uh, Judy. Uh, Gavin's gonna get, make you know that they, uh, the JDA, uh, did, did seek Judy out to, uh, delete this, discharge and get this done. Uh, so we commend you for an excellent job. Uh, you should really do an excellent job. So thank you for that. You got, you got any questions? Uh, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so let me ask you, so Judy, the, the other counties, meaning Morgan and Walton, they went through and made similar verbiage changes as well, I mean.
Yes, sir. The document they have would I actually be this document, but where I have struck out things in yellow and added green. That was just to clean up some of the language, but they have this exact amendment is in all three of our ordinances.
And if I understood you correctly, this, the implementation of this zoning change effectively eliminates any chance of any residential build-out in that, in that community, correct?
Correct. The, it is no longer an allowed use at all. And, um, uh, we would not have, I think it's Division four forty, um, four thirty and four, or four forty and four forty-five, which had that town center component, and it also had the potential to have some residential. Those are no longer, our ordinance would no longer allow someone to come in and do that unless this board got together and decided that you wanted to change it, or if the other governments. But for our land, the, this whole, um, bottom area pretty much of the, uh, where it says tier two, the majority of that is where Facebook now, um, has their, uh, they've got four hundred and sixteen acres. We have a twenty-two acre tract between it and the Bioscience up on, um, s- the Shire Parkway. And then there's another small tract, and then the Water and Sewer Authority is located down south there. For us, Takata will expand, but within the Parkway, we have a limited amount to even dedicate to residential at this point.
Thanks, Chairman.
Anyone else? Thank you. At this time, we're gonna open it up, uh, for those that wanna speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. Uh, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Those that wanna speak in favor tonight. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that wanna oppose tonight. You may do so at this time. Please come up and, uh, state your name, your address for the record, please. You may do so at this time. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This time I'd like to recommend for approvals, zoning amendment Z O A M D one nine dash zero zero seven. Amendment includes the following: Stanton Springs zoning amendment, Division two eighty-five, multi-county mixed-use business park. Amendment will include a complete repeal and replace of the ordinance division. The planning commission recommend five zero.
Thank you, sir. I got a second. It's been motion, um, by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Cowell. Um, end of discussion. All in favor? Passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Judy. Next on the agenda is county manager report.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to begin with, I'd like to, uh, point out a few things to you that, um, what we have been working on, uh, in fulfillment of the implementation of the strategic plan. Among those things that we've done, um, we've hired the custodials, the additional part-time custodial person. Um, that was a part of the plan. We've also hired the, filled all the positions for our code enforcement officers that we had, as well as building inspector position, and, uh, we have a new wellness program coordinator. Uh, the wellness program coordinator's, uh, salary is paid out of the grant money, um, the fifty thousand dollar wellness grant that Sigma, who's our health insurance carrier, provides for us. So that's at no cost, um, uh, to the county. Uh, the, we, a couple of other things that are happening, um, you mentioned, you heard Mr. Turner's report on all the things that are going on in, uh, the recreation department, including partnering with the chamber for movie nights over at, um, um, i- i- movie nights in the park and then over at the Legion Field as well. Um, we have, uh, or you will be, uh, or, I'm sorry, you, you already have approved the contract to move ahead with the animal control center, uh, in the, um, senior services buildings. And again, those are, are going towards goals and objectives and strategies that we have, uh, in our strategic plan. We're also continuing to aggr- uh, address critical safety and security needs, uh, including, um, security of our own, uh, s- um, Intranet system here at the county, uh, to protect us from cyber attacks. And so we're doing quite a bit of work in that, but also with the fire and sheriff's department, uh, we continue to staff. Um, and also, uh, as we continue to contain equipment. Uh, currently, the newest piece of fire equipment, which is a four thousand gallon tender, should be, um, delivered mid-September. We do have some meetings that are scheduled, uh, in relation to the, um, to the strategic plan. Uh, we're meeting on September twenty-third with some of the community members who were originally part of the planning team. But most importantly, I guess in this, at this point, is a meeting on October fourteenth where we will be meeting. This will be an open community meeting, and everyone is invited to attend. And this will be, uh, from six to eight o'clock at, uh, Turner Lake. And, um, so we wanna have everyone who's interested to come. And at that time, uh, we'll be, um, reporting a- all of the work that has been done and that is, that's been completed. And then also, uh, we'll be giving them all the information about what work is still in progress and, and where we are. A few things that I wanted to bring to your attention from my report, um, there's a number of issues that I wanted to just talk a little bit a- about and let you know that, um, we have been meeting with the Department of Homeland Security in preparation for our, uh, election. Uh, they did come and visit our site to make sure that it was physi- we could physically secure the site. Uh, also, the elections department registered twenty-one hundred new voters during the past month. The DA's office, uh, their employees have participated, uh, in a second annual circuit team day. And this is to focus on personality traits and characteristics. And as we know, all of the work and all of the attention that has been given to some of the mental illness, uh, issues that we have here and the accountability courts that we've been developing in order to handle that. Um, also, uh, in the landscape, excuse me, in the planning and zoning office, we've hired Chris Stanley, um, who is our landscape architect and also will be handling stormwater and land disturbance permits. Uh, and he came on board, uh, on the first of August. The EMA folks have been working with Newton and Walton, w- with us and with Walton County, rather, we, uh, to form the local emergency planning, uh, council, um, to, and in particular, their concentration has been on, uh, how to deal with hazardous materials and hazardous, um, hazardous dumps or, uh, emergencies and how to plan and to prepare for those. Uh, Finance is working on a new employee finance handbook, uh, so that the general employees are gonna be able to understand finance a little bit better. Our auditors will be here the first week of October. Um, and we anticipate that we'll have another good audit, uh, and report as we did, um, last year. Um, as you know, we've been, we, we did meet with the U.S. Census Bureau officials, um, and, and of course, Ms. Bertram is gonna be instrumental in helping us move with the complete count committee. And again, we would encourage all of the citizens to make sure that you're, you are counted in this 2020 census, so. Also, uh, I wanna say that, uh, we have applied, also would like to let you know that we applied for an ACCG Employee Safety Grant, uh, in the amount of, uh, three thousand dollars. We had thirty-five people complete our defensive driving, um, program during the, during the last month. Uh, I mentioned a little bit about our cybersecurity. And, uh, as you may know, uh, we have, um, deployed now advanced encryption and data protection on all of our emails. So it is possible to send and receive encrypted emails, uh, within our email system. And we are also working on drafting a data security incident response plan, so that we have a guide, um, that'll be handy with exactly what to do, how to do it, who to contact and so forth. I'd also want to report that Newton County Juvenile Court was selected by the Council of Juvenile Court, Georgia's, uh, jud- judges of Georgia as a demonstration site for the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. Um, again, we've developed, you know, the courts have developed, um, many accountability courts that have a family court program, uh, along with, um, the court programs for the adolescents and for the, um, delinquents. And, but it also has taken a more holistic approach to encompass, uh, their families as an, as an effort to, uh, to try to correct some of the, uh, behavior. Uh, we hired our first ARSAT employee and fleet, uh, two weeks ago. And finally, the senior services had a luau and dance in, uh, mid-August, and a hundred twenty-five people attended. So it was a well-attended island. And at this point, I would like to ask Chief Connor to come up, and give you all a report on Station Eight. Um, we know that this was a station, of course, as you know, that was budgeted in the two thousand eleven SPOSS. And we've had many, many challenges as working towards that, um, getting that station, uh, underway. So, uh, the chief is gonna kinda give you a brief, uh, update on where we are. And, um, so we'll be seeing that project moving pretty quickly.
Good evening, Chairman.
How you doing, sir?
County manager did ask me to kinda give an update on Station Eight, where we are. Pretty much when I came in, I knew that this station was approved in two thousand eleven SPOSS. But the problem we ran into is, is current location. The county did not own the property. So we had to actually start looking for a place to get to build this station. The current, uh, location on Highway one is really not, lots, was not large enough. If you go out there and look at it, I know I took the county manager. The state right-of-way pen sits about six inches off the corner of that building. And once we tore that building down, we would have to abide by state rules on setbacks. So a new station would not fit on there. It would not be grandfathered in. So we started looking for a suitable site. Um, some things we started looking at is, we were trying to see how many residents we could touch. And we kinda started on the outside of the county line, around Kent Rock Road, Gum Creek, uh, Deer Trail, those areas that have always fell outside of a five-mile road miles, um, of a fire station. So we located a place, um, that was very suitable to our needs. And it was, it's in the twenty-three-hundred block of, uh, Gum Creek Road. Uh, don't really have the official address right now, but we did move forward and we purchased four point three acres, uh, there, and it's just north of Gum Creek Landing. Um, and we're, actually, it's gonna fill in a hole, um, in that county map that shows five road miles of our current station. So it's gonna fill in a very big void in, uh, the northern section of, uh, of the county. Uh, some other things we were making sure that we needed was that it had the infrastructure. We needed water. Uh, we needed a fiber, or, you know, cable ability so we can hook to the county's internet system. We needed natural gas. Um, and all those were available at this certain site. And we looked at several before we decided to go with this four, uh, four-acre tract. We are moving forward. Uh, we, like I said, we've, uh, been able to purchase the property. We've already had our soil and, uh, soil analysis done for the building. Um, we are moving forward, um, been working with Finance, uh, Ms. Randy in Finance. Well, she told me today they re- uh, released the RFP for our project manager, um, so that, um, we can get somebody on board to kinda help guide the design of this station. Uh, now, we, as a department, we, um, brought in a building committee, which is our guys that live in these stations twenty-four-seven, um, and taking into consideration certain mandates that this new station would need to address. And it's a clean initiative. One of the biggest things that we had to make sure that we address in this new building are there's certain items that we've got to make sure that we're protecting our employees from the environment that they are exposed to every time they pretty much go on a call. We've started some new stuff. We're issuing everybody two sets of gear, but this building has to have a decon room. Once they come back, they have to go through a decon room, then shower before they can actually go into the building. There are certain mandates that we have to follow now to protect our employees from the carcinogens that they are kinda exposed to in their day-to-day, uh, you know, work habits, our work environments. So, um, those things were addressed by the building committee. They went out, they went to several departments, looked at buildings that had these clean initiatives. Uh, they brought them back in and they kinda compiled a agenda of what we need in a fire station for Newton County. Um, we're hoping that once, uh, the RFP goes out for a project manager. Now, uh, I was told today that that should be, uh, ended on September the nineteenth. So hopefully they'll have a project manager that will come in and take in our design needs and put it in a footprint so that then we can turn around and give an RFP for a general contractor to build the station. Again, Finance is saying that, uh, their hopes are to have the, uh, project manager, RFP back, have the project manager identified, and then get a design for this station out and still hopefully get it back on your agenda by the first board meeting in November to submit it for a, uh, approval for a general contractor to start building the station. So we are moving forward. I know it's a project that's been a long time in coming, but we, uh, as we got looking into it, we met many obstacles that we had to look at. into it, we met many obstacles that we had to look at. First one was a place to build the station. I think we got that. Now just getting the project manager onboard, getting an actual blueprint of the station design, incorporating these mandates that we need to meet and then putting it out to RFP, to a general contractor in hopefully November, December. And I know we're getting into the holidays, start breaking ground.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief. As you know, we really need this in the northern part of the county. It's already impacting ISO ratings and insurance premiums are increasing and so we need to get this onboard. My question is actually for legal, since this was on the 2011 SPOST, at what point does it have to be substantially completed?
Do not have the 2011 SPOST agreement with me tonight to tell you whether or not this is the one that had the sunsetting language in it when I came onboard. So if it would be okay with the board, I will review the 2011 SPOST and then the previous SPOST and see which one has a provision indicating that we have to spend the money by a certain amount.
I know the 2005 SPOST had that language in there. I don't remember that language being in the 2011, but I would just like to make sure that we don't have that provision.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Trum. If my memory serves me right, I'm guessing we'll lean on Lord just a little bit to help me out just a little bit. This was the 1.1 that former Commissioner Tim Fleming that we asked, that he wanted a fire station built at that particular time to reduce our ISO ratings. And so I, and I guess, I guess, and it's good. Only thing, what I just want to say is that I just don't like to forget people who really love Newton County and the time they sit in these seats who want to do something really positive for the people. And I think that whenever it's completed, and I'm hoping I'll be around, but whenever it's completed, that we don't forget a friend.
Anyone else? Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for being here. Thank you for giving that update tonight.
Thank you. That's all I had, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the Senate agenda. I seek a motion that we approve. Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. We did remove item D from the agenda. Any, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Passes 5 to 0. Next on the agenda is item number 11, purchasing recreation discussion, consideration of approval, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the construction of playground equipment that will be installed at the Nelson Heights Community Center. My understanding is the grading has been done, the equipment has been ordered and is either already here or will be here shortly. And so this is to do, is for that, for that equipment and for the construction of the playground.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. So moved as stated by Mr. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Mr. Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to make sure, Lloyd, did we have to change the master plan that was done back in 2016 for this?
No, sir. I believe it was, you're talking about the plan for Nelson Heights Center?
Yes.
My understanding is no, that there was an area that was set aside for playground equipment behind the building.
Okay. So would they have to make any changes to that? Thank you.
Commissioner Schultz.
I just was curious, I didn't see, and maybe I just missed it, but I didn't see any pictures or designs of the equipment. I know that it's supposed to be, that part of this is to design the equipment, but, and design and build it, but are, is there any kind of schematic or drawing?
I'll have to get with the recreation director. I was hoping that maybe he would still be here for this, but I can have him send you all whatever he has there on the, thanks for the information.
That would be helpful.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Passes 5 to 0. Next is item number 12, government building, that facility discussion, consideration, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we completed the construction of the judicial center expansion, there were additional elevators that were put in that building. This con, this request is to amend the contract to provide maintenance, routine maintenance and service on those elevators in the amount of $8,400.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Is that a one-time fee or is it an annual?
It'll be an annual fee.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Next, human resources discussion and consideration of approval of administrative service agreement. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our HR staff has been working with ACCG to work to enhance our employee benefits package. Our HR Director, Amanda Schumaker, is here tonight and I'd ask her to come up and talk to you all about this particular program. We're expanding our offerings in order to allow the employees to take part in a Roth IRA and I'll let her give you the details.
Good evening. Yes, this just says, Ms. Lloyd Kerr indicated, as I am currently the strategic plan champion of employee engagement. And one of my things that I seek to do is to bring expansive benefits package or offering to our employees at little or no cost to the county. And what you have before you is one of the things that I seek to do is to introduce to our employees the Roth 457B program. And it's an add-on program that's no cost to the county. We have one currently with ICMA and we want to add one with ACCG. So that's what's being decided tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any, any questions? Commissioner Schultz?
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this, from this vote because I'm on the Board of Managers and for ACCG and I do vote on this.
Okay. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative services agreement between Newton County and ACCG for, and the defined contribution plan program board of trustees to allow for a option, is that what it's going to be? An option for a Roth IRA to be added to the 457 program?
Yeah.
Okay. It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes 4, 411 recusal. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, item 13, human resource risk management. You got a team of people.
Ma'am, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What's before you is for consideration is the renewal of our property and casualty insurance policy. Pamela and I engaged Gallagher Risk Management Services with regards to our insurance renewal rates. And what has been presented for your consideration is the renewal of the policy at a cost of $599,000, $599,270,000, which is an increase of 6.3% over last year, which is around $35,000, Everything in terms of the deductibles remained the same and we are pretty happy that the percentage of increase only rests at 6.3%.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Cowan? Any question? Thank you. Thank you for being, being here, sir. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the travel of the property casualty insurance policy renewal proposal in the amount of $599,270.
It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion tonight? All in favor? Passes 5 to 0. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next is item number 14, KCENB. We have tonight, resolution R.090319. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to change the name of Keep Covington Newton Beautiful to Keep Newton Beautiful. And if you'd like, the, the resolution does state all of the reasons why we would like to do so, if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, say it again, sir.
The resolution does state all of the rationale behind the name change. So if you would like, I'll be glad to read through the, to read through the resolution and that'll get every one day the reason why. Resolution to the Board of Commissioners, Newton County, Georgia, naming Keep Newton Beautiful. Whereas Board of Commissioners previously created a county department known as Keep Covington Newton Beautiful and shared funding responsibilities for the activities of the department with the city of Covington. Whereas the Board of Commissioners now provides sole financial support for the activities of Keep Covington Newton Beautiful. Whereas the Keep Covington Newton Beautiful Department has recently been reorganized as a sub-department under the Newton County Water Resources Department for organizational efficiency. Whereas in recognition that the sub-department works to keep all of Newton County beautiful, including all municipalities within the county, and in the spirit of the One Newton Campaign, the Board of Commissioners desires to rename the sub-department as Keep Newton Beautiful. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Newton County, Georgia, that the county sub-department formerly known as Keep Covington Newton Beautiful is hereby renamed as Keep Newton Beautiful. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon adoption. County staff are requested to take appropriate steps to implement and publicize the name change, so resolved this third day of September 2019.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes 5 to 0. Thank you so much. Next, item number 15, water resources, resources, discussion, consideration to approve design bill, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Brown, our water resources director is here tonight and I've asked him to speak with you on this particular topic. You also received a little earlier in the meeting, I passed out a memo from Mr. Brown explaining a little bit about the, what the scoring was and so forth for the people who presented on this particular project. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is just an agreement that we are entering with the construction group and a design group to have a, to design the full expansion of the water facility. This will give us an opportunity to having not only the general contractor, but the engineer group sitting at the table with staff to design and create these projects and know the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price at the end of the project. So we'll know exactly what the, the project will cost before we actually go out to a general contractor. Then we go into the phase two portion with the general contractor for construction.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Do it. We can get a motion on the floor, we go up for discussion.
I move for approval of the design bill contract with Crowder Construction Company to design and construct the improvements to the county's water supply facilities and water treatment plant.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, Commissioner Schultz.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So James, I'm looking at this attachment that you provided us. Is this correct? This one right here, this very fine eight font print? I can read it, by the way. I'll be able to read it. So my question in all seriousness is, who is going to be supervising this particular? Is there's going to be an engineer on, that's involved? Who, who is actually going to be the, the, the project manager? What, what are their qualifications?
Well, not only were it current staff, including myself being part of the project, but we also came to an agreement with Carter and Sloot to be the, the appointed person for the county.
Okay. So Carter and Sloot will actually be the point person along with staff?
With staff will be the point person and with assistance from Carter.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I see it says various improvements. What, what's, what's one of the major improvements that we're talking about for this?
One of the major ones would be the solids handling, the de-watering building and equipment that's associated with that. Like I previously stated in an earlier meeting, that we can get the water in, get the water out, but we have to do what we're actually taking out of the water for human consumption. That's one, one of our Achilles' heels in, in the, at the plant right now. So that is one of the major, but there are several other ones to actually get us to the 35 million gallons and sustain us for, for the inevitable future as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, sir. All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Next is item 17, citizen comments. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to come up and make comments. You may please do so at this time, please stay tuned.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. There was, I think you all received an email from Ms. Smith regarding the addition of the ATA contract. Should have been item, this next item.
I, I did, but did we not, did we, at the time, because we didn't amend this, what
This contract was one that had been tabled indefinitely until we got the report from ABM. And so we received that report and now would like for you to consider that. And I thought that it had already had been, it had been added to the agenda.
I mean, I, I would. I mean, I, I would. Guys, let's, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's get on our next agenda. Let's get on our next agenda, if that'd be okay with you. Yeah, let's. Well, we don't have it on the agenda. So, uh, I don't know. Mr. Kerr, would it be a problem if we add this to the next agenda?
If, if there's not a way to consider it, I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
So, so, okay. So I, I amend the agenda. I seek a motion that we amend the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, finding that an item must be considered tonight, I would suggest that at this time we amend the agenda to include the ATA contract, which is time-sensitive and must be decided upon tonight.
Thank you.
Some of it is stated by the county attorney.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Thank you. This will become all opposed? So it passes four to one? This is gonna be, this is gonna become item sixteen B.
Thank you. This agreement is to engage ATA consultants, says Alex Tomas and Associates, who do rate, who provide rate services. They would do an analysis of all of our utility bills to determine whether or not we are being charged correctly based on the rate system that's used in utilities. And it, what their service would do would be, would be to monitor and to do an analysis of those bills. If it's determined that we're not paying, that we are paying more than we should be paying, then they would meet with the utility provider and make sure that we were then billed correctly and to seek any kind of repayment that would be possible. And that would be done in exchange for a percentage of the savings. So there would be no cost, direct outright cost to the county for this particular service, with the exception that his, their, they would be paid via that, the percentage of the savings.
Thank you. And this is the young man that came.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Tomas is here tonight, if you have any questions.
I'm sorry. No, we're voting to amend the agenda. I seek a motion of approval, please. I seek a motion.
I make a motion to, a motion to approve the service agreement with, between Newton County and Alexandria Tomas and Associates for review of utility rates and pricing for the Newton County government.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make sure I understand this correctly, that unless there are savings identified and mutually agreed on between the utility company and the county, we, we do not pay anything to.
No, sir, that's correct. They, we would only pay, and that would be a portion of any refund or a portion of the total savings if there is a savings, and then it would be, I believe it's forty percent of the savings.
Okay, so, so my next question would be, is that a perpetual fee that we would pay or percentage that we would pay? For, for instance, if, if we were, if we, if it was identified that we have been paying a thousand dollars too much for the last year, is, do we go back any? Do we, do we pay the percentage on the, on the five thousand dollars one time? Or do we pay it for the next, once a month, for the next twelve months?
It would be for the, it would be on the past savings, and it would also be on future savings for a period of twenty-four months.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I guess I just don't understand why staff can't do this, why we have to engage a third party to do this in the, can you explain that to me, why we need a third party?
Well, we don't have the expertise for, to do it. I think rate structures can be complicated. It takes a good bit of analysis to determine what the individual usage is. And frankly, we've not ever done this before, so I don't know that we have the ability to do it. But beyond that, I do think that because I do think that there is some advantage to us to having a third party negotiate those items for us. It's a completely objective approach, and I, I think that it would benefit us to, if we did have the third party.
So the other question that I have is for Legal, since there's been some question about the, this item on the agenda, has Legal had an opportunity to look at the contract?
No, tonight's the first night that I've seen this, and there is language in here that I would redline.
Sam Van Valkenburg did review this, though.
Sam, did he approve it?
Yes, my understanding, there was a couple of items that needed to be changed, but my understanding is Sam did review it.
Okay, I see an indemnification thing that we need to take out. Would it be possible for the board to approve, with the county attorney to bring back and indicate that, that that would?
That's fine.
This may just not be the one.
Yeah, it's, it's a simple document, yes.
Any more discussion?
So does that, so does the agenda, I mean, the motion need to be amended then?
I would recommend that we do so.
Any more, any more discussion, first?
Just a comment to Commissioner Schultz's question of whether in-house people could do this. I was involved with this a good bit at the city, and it's difficult to read ordinances that deal with kilowatts and those type of rate structures, particularly if you look at the City of Covington's code. It is very difficult to read and figure out what the proper billing is. And I still don't understand what a PCA charge is, that product cost adjustment. And it's, it's on every utility bill from the City of Covington. It's, it's a, it's a difficult to deal with the billing structures for regulated industries. So I would suggest this is probably a good idea to look at, although I would suggest also that we have to have our attorney approve it first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so if we continue to pay a percentage of our savings for twenty-four months, what is the, what is the window for finding these percent, these, these, or these, these savings? Is he gonna take, is the company gonna take a six-month snapshot, a three-month snapshot, or a two-year snapshot? And we could be paying, albeit savings, the savings mount, you know, theoretically, the savings mount for us. We're still paying the fees, but I just want to see, I, I would like to find a, a, an endpoint.
Mr. Tomas, maybe if you could, if you're prepared to address that question, if you could maybe explain.
Well, I guess my question is, so we will pay a percentage to you and your company for a period of twenty-four months on each component of savings you find, correct? So how long will you look for those savings on gas, water, electricity, and all the components? I mean, how long will you look? Will, two years from now, will you be finding, will it be possible for you to find other savings? So, so you'll have a, the look will be perpetual?
During, during that period of time, we, we do have technology. We're not just kind of winging it. We've invested heavily in technology over the years, so we capture that debt every month. It's run through automated audits. It kicks out in cases to analysts to review. Anything that needs to be escalated comes up to me or another individual, you know, for addressing negotiation. Tariffs can get pretty complicated. And, and we do that for the period of the contract. So constantly we're finding things. You guys are a large organization. You're constantly changing buildings, meters get changed out, things like that.
So there is a period of contract. There is a period of time that you'll, there's a, there's a, there's a point in time where you will stop looking.
Well, yeah, there's a two-year contract. At the end of that two years, if you say, hey, we're done, that's fine. But the bill cycles on anything, like say we find something on the twenty-third month. Unfortunately, you'll still see our paper for the next twenty-four months, but that's good. We saved you much.
I got, I got you. I just wanted to make sure I understood there was, there was a window, and I may not be here in, in two years, so.
Is that term two years or five years? Because I think in the contract it said five years.
Well, I had two years. Anyway, it's, it, neither here nor there, whether it's five years or two years, I'm good with either one. It's been a couple of months.
Let me say this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out and ask Mr. Cowan, if you would, to amend his motion to a table. Our county attorney is, is, she just, she got too many yellow markings on this, on this contract. So until our county attorney has the opportunity to look over it and say, hey, let's move forward with it. Commissioner Cowan, if you don't mind.
Oh, is it proper to just take away the motion?
Is that right?
So whoever seconded it, take away, if he seconds it, I'll remove my motion to table this.
No, you just have to table.
Just say, okay.
Okay.
Take it in. That's great. So guys, we'll get an opportunity to look at this again. I hope that our next meeting, which is on the seventeenth, the seventeenth. All in favor? To the seventeenth. Okay, pardon, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any way could we, could somebody give me what we may be charged from, from the county, I mean, from the attorney's perspective, who is charged? Because I know this is always a charge.
Commissioner Henderson, I'll be glad to do that. I'll do a full email to the board with changes that I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I, all, all in favor to table? Thank you. It's been tabled to our next board meeting, which is on the seventeenth. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You may come at this time.
Good evening, Chairman Baines, commissioners. A lot of y'all know me. I'm Tim Biddy, Oxford, Georgia, and I represent Curbside Way Systems. And we've been doing trash pickup for the city of Covington since May. And they chose tonight to send the trash to an out-of-county company, and all the garbage goes to Jackson, Georgia now. Now, most of y'all got smartphones. Y'all probably already know about it, but I just thought I might bring them here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is Joyce Wilson. I live in District Four, one zero one four seven Settlers Grove. Right behind my residence is SRG, and BD is zero point eight miles from our house. I went to the city council meeting today. I live in the county, but I wanted to see what was going on there. And in particular, I just want to talk about District Four, Settlers Grove, Hazel Brand, Waterford area. I'm constantly struggling with the county and the city to see where code enforcement falls into place. Even when for safety matters, we need to get the tree branches on the city or county side trimmed. So once we pull out from Waterford to Hazel Brand, we can see the trucks that come back and forth from usage of SRG. Constantly fighting with the county code of enforcement about whose area it is to pick up the Walmart shopping carts that are abandoned on the side of road of Hazel Brand. We have an abandoned house over there that they're currently deciding if it's county or city, and that house has been abandoned for about five months. And I went and looked at the property on the back porch. It has a refrigerator on the back that has the doors attached. There's no lock to it. I'm making the point of that area in particular. I live in the county. Four houses up is the city. But yet, I pay all of my utility bills to the city. Okay, I would love to have sidewalks on Hazel Brand right in front of SRG where I can exercise and walk without having to get in my vehicle and go to Regent Field, Legion Field, or go park at the library on Hazel Brand and walk down Floyd Street. I like the way Pace Street is looking, but that corner of District Four, there can be some improvement there. There has been a lot of residents there for some time, and a lot out of time, but I'm very concerned about that area of Settlers Grove, Waterford, and Hazel Brand in front of SRG. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Theodosha Wade, and I also live in the county. And I'm really here asking the Board of Commissioners to join the city of Covington in testing our air, our ambient air, not out of the smokestacks of Bard, but our ambient air in the county for ethylene oxide. I know you're aware. I know y'all have talked about it. I've talked to some of you all individually. The city is doing ten sites within the city limits. The EPD is talking about doing four sites in our area, both, two of them at a fourth of a mile out from Bard. Two of them from, a mile out from Bard. Our concern as county citizens is that we are not seeing a clear picture. We won't see the whole picture if we only do testing in the city. The, I just want to be reminded that the data shows that our Uh, the, uh, I just want to be reminded that the data shows that our situation is worse than Smyrna. And Smyrna already has Smyrna, Cobb County, and the city of Atlanta all binding together, working, having a task force working on this issue. But again, the air quality in our area and the cancer, um, problems associated with it are worse in our area. Um, a report says, the scientists are telling us really, that around Smyrna, ethylene oxide causes a hundred and fourteen extra cases of cancer for every million people exposed over their lifetime. In Covington, that's two hundred and fourteen, so it's almost double. Um, and the EPA is really looking at it as being unacceptable when it's a hundred. So we're a hundred and fourteen over what's acceptable. The state has their acceptable area concentration, their ACC, that's EPD that has that. Um, and for ethylene oxide, it's one additional case of cancer for every one million people exposed. In Smyrna, the state estimates that ETO emissions are twenty-seven to sixty-one percent, uh, times higher than the ACC. But in Covington, it's seventeen to ninety-seven times. Um, they, the question is, how far out do, do you test? And I know that. I mean, I know probably you're thinking, well, if it's bad in the city and we find out in next year that the results come in and the city's terrible, then maybe we'll start, look at the county. I don't think it's something we can wait on, though. I really think this is a chemical that is a known carcinogen. It's a problem. It attacks DNA, and that's why we use it in medical sterilization. Uh, but it's sterilizing and it's affecting human DNA. And we don't want to have to wait and find out later that we made a mistake by not testing when we need to. And I think the, the results that we saw in Willowbrook, uh, in, in, um, Illinois outside of Chicago were really key when it said they did thirty-nine sites.
Thank you so much. I hate to cut you off, but I, thank you so much.
Okay. And six thousand and four hundred cases of cancer were, I mean, they found it really bad.
Name is Gene Wills, um, one twenty-five Homestead Way, Covington, Georgia. Here to talk about ETO also. We read in paper, or most people have read in paper, that, um, that eighty-five pounds of ETO was leaked from Bard in twenty sixteen. We went to a, uh, meeting, Legion Field off of Elm Street. Bard representative declared that they didn't have leaks. They run a very safe, safe facility, top-notch, no problems. They repeated a mantra of how great their, their, uh, process was and how safe it was. They lied. And now we have lawyers all over the country seizing on Covington. Every person, anyone who gets cancer from this day forward, looking at lawsuits, looking at Bard. I really feel that our leadership, elected leaders, should investigate or find a way to, uh, map out a process for Bard to, uh, be shut down in Covington, Newton County. I know they have billions of dollars. And someone told me they even give out millions to politicians. But this is a life and death, or death situation. You could choose to get help financially, or you could choose to help your elected, um, the people that elected for you. And also, uh, coming up here, less than from now to twenty twenty, this is going to continue on. And I hope we gain the strong following to shut Bard down from the community. And we're going to be pressing this very hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your service to the community. My name is Bernadette Smith. I live on Wheat Street in Covington Mill. And obviously, I don't need to state any particular statistics because you've all heard this about the ethylene Bard. But I am, excuse me, ethylene Bard, yeah, we should call it that. Um, I stand here before you as one who, two years ago, at this very time, was prepping for a mastectomy. And I stand before you as one who was facing the mastectomy after her husband had died six months prior. Stage four metastatic cancer. As a matter of fact, oddly enough, sitting there, he, uh, some of you might know before twenty twelve, listening to the, uh, gentleman who was talking about the wonderful facility over at Turner Lake. Uh, my husband Ray Smith was the facilitator of the drama and the art department that was going on there at the time at Newton County Senior Services. And he was very passionate about what he did there at Newton County Senior Services. And that after twenty twelve, he could no longer work there because he was getting sicker and sicker, and we did not know why. And it was discovered fifty days before he died. And like I said, shortly thereafter. No history of cancer in my family regarding breast cancer. I'm grateful to be here tonight to be able to say this. I'm saddened that he's not standing next to me. And I would like to encourage you all to extend the testing to Newton County beyond. The, uh, the analogy of the canary in the coal mine keeps coming to my mind. And my husband was a canary. And I know there's a lot more canaries in this county. So I would thank you for your inspiration. Bernadette Smith. I live on Wheat Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Larry McSwain, thirty-five, Glengarry Chase, Covington, Georgia. Just want to make a couple of comments on, uh, things that you folks considered tonight. First, I want to thank you for approving the, uh, work to be done at the, uh, Lake Barner facilities. Um, I appreciate that. I don't know exactly what's on that list. Uh, I'll be asking for that information shortly. But I do want to remind you that, uh, this has been a very long process. And I'm very disappointed at the pace that we have pursued in getting the work done there. There have been, uh, actually, public safety issues involved at, at that plant identified at least five years ago. Uh, our Carter Scoop report was done two years and about three or four months ago. We had the Jifa loan approved one year ago, and we're just now doing the first work. Folks, that just is not a reasonable schedule. And I just don't understand why the board is not more concerned about the pace of improvements at that water facility. As I was sitting there, the only explanation I can have that I think is reasonable is that this is an enterprise water fund that runs in the black. Therefore, you just don't worry about it. But let me just remind you, it's this very same process and procedure that allowed twenty-five million dollars to be swandered on the Bear Creek project, that allowed fifteen million dollars worth of improvements at the water plant in two thousand and ten that did not yield the results that we needed in terms of, of water. We got, what, eighteen or nineteen million gallons a day instead of twenty-five? And so we're now still working on some of those problems. So what I'm asking for is more oversight. You've got to push Lloyd, or James, or someone to get these problems resolved, or we'll be talking about this again next year. Thank you. One other issue I wanted to mention is that I'm not certain how this, uh, utility project that Lloyd discussed fits with the ABM project. Remember, we're paying fourteen million dollars for that. And I don't know that we've recognized any savings yet. So I just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Haley Ingram. This is Ariette Ingram. We live at, um, two zero five Riverbend Drive, Covington, Georgia. Um, and just-
What's your name again, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
What's your name again?
Kaylee Ingram. Um, and I just want to say, I'm going to put her down. I've lived in Covington my whole life, and I lived in the Mill Village on Hackett Street. Grew up there, twenty-five years out of my life. Now we live in Riverbend. It's one point six miles from Bard. The house on Hackett Street was one point four miles from Bard. Um, when I was pregnant with her, I worked at Just Imagine. I'm an esthetic, I was an esthetician there. That was point five miles from Bard. And my daughter was born with, um, a somatic genetic mutation. And, uh, so it's not caused from myself or my husband. Um, and it had to have been, the only known is an environmental factor. Um, she's one in a billion, meaning there's, there's less than, there's less than two hundred cases of anything even close to what she has in the entire world. That being said, there's another case, um, another child that is on the same trial-based program in Boston. Um, and we've just connected that her husband worked with the ethylene oxide. Um, and so now we have two cases. So my concern is maybe if we can figure out the fastest way to do those testings because there's a genetic mutation that has caused, um, she has a massive benign tumor that has completely compressed. She's had two amputations on her leg now, and it, it mutates the gene to, um, grow super fast. You can't cut the tissue because it makes it morph even faster. Um, so that being said, the tumor has gone up through her organs, all the way up through to her diaphragm, and is pushing. The trial medication at Boston has started to make it stable, but it has been a massive fight. So I don't want any other, you know, in addition to the other cancers, I, I definitely do not want any other families to go through the things that we're going through when, when they can be perfectly healthy children, um, families. So that's, that's my concern. That's the fight. Um, I hope that we can all be in this together the way, you know, to, to help everyone here. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hey, guys, Cindy Jordan. I live on ten sixty-five Silverthorne Drive. Thank you for allowing us these few minutes to speak. We, I represent Say No to ETO. We're almost five hundred people strong in our local group. We are connected to the Stop Sterigenics Group in Smyrna, which is forty-five hundred. Also connected to the Illinois Grand Rapids, Michigan, and Lakewood, Colorado groups. So we are over ten thousand in just those groups alone. My point in coming tonight is, two weeks ago at our last board meeting, I asked you guys if we could, please, if you would consider putting this air testing to vote. It wasn't done, obviously, then. It wasn't on the agenda for tonight. We are coming tonight to see where you stand. We want to know, we'd like to ask you if, if, at the end of my three minutes, if each of you would please let us know where you stand on this issue. I, you guys have been wonderful emailing us back and forth. I thank you for that. My understanding is that you have stated that you're partnering with the city of Covington. How I perceive that, so please correct me when I'm done, if that's not correct. My understanding is, is that you're saying that you're going to, going to help pay for, I'm assuming, part of the funding for the city of Covington. What we are asking and what we are adamant that we need and we want is air testing outside of the city of Covington. One mile out from BD is not far enough. You wait two or three months till we get those results back, and then you begin testing? We're looking at six months out. Does that really matter, six months? I can tell you it matters. Ask the family of Crest Meredith, who are burying their, that gentleman tonight. They're, they have a funeral tonight for him. He was diagnosed with cancer, stage four, very aggressive cancer, on July fifth. Within eight weeks, he's dead. He is a fifty-three-year-old man, father of six, six children. He lives five miles from BD. Yes, it's just over into the Walton County line. That shouldn't matter. These are lives that are being affected. These are deaths that are happening two months. It matters. What if he'd known four months ago that ethylene oxide was an issue? I'll put that on the EPA for their irresponsibility and not notifying the public. However, we are aware of the fact now. He could have told his doctor that he'd been exposed to that environmental carcinogen. Maybe they could have, maybe he would have been prompted to go get medical attention sooner instead of just assuming it was, I'm getting older, you know, I have back issues, whatever. Now that we know, now that we have the knowledge, we have responsibility to do something with that knowledge. So I'd like to ask if you guys will please let us know where each of you Commissioners stand.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, this is Madam Attorney, Madam Chief Clerk, County Clerk, and Mr. County Manager. My name is Gladstone Nichols, Level Two. No, I don't. Four nine to five Lakeside Circle. Um, I'm here, you know, my real objective of coming, well, I wanted to speak on the matter of the, um, lack of tax collection by the Tax Collector's Office. Understandably, it's a constitutional office, so you really don't have too much oversight over their activities. But then you seem to have a lot of oversight over what the Sheriff's Department does. So that's also a constitutional office. But the idea here is every year we talk about a tax digest. And for what was in the papers about what was not collected, seems to have been a hole in that tax digest. How long it's been going on? I don't know. But the idea here is, I'm in real estate, so I go from County to County sometimes for tax sales. And when Newton County has one, it's like, uh, biennial event almost, or even longer. So I, I don't know why it is, but you know, it's, um, when you talk about revenue for the county, it's a big hole that I think ought to be addressed. Now, that pales in comparison to what I've heard these folks talking about now. I went to that same meeting on August fifth, and there are lines of folks talking. And these were not just folks talking. These are folks who are sick. These are folks who had had family members who had died. And so the idea here is, we cannot just say it's a city problem. Because this last speaker mentioned how it's, uh, almost nationwide. So the idea here is, it's something the county should, you know, get cracking on. See, I asked about your position on, on this matter. I'm not sure if you're prepared to do that in this setting, but it would be good if you did. But the idea here is, we just cannot wait and let folk continue to, um, you know, be undeserved. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Commissioners, um, a few weeks ago, went to the housing project out here, I believe you call it Hercules. I'm sorry, Shawn Berucio, twelve oh five Amber Drive. Uh, walked door to door, met a young lady, had twins. Uh, she lost one of her twins at birth. There's a lot of sick people out there. They have faces, they're not numbers. And one concern I had in going in the young lady's apartment was that she had smelled gas in her apartment. She had, uh, a smoke detector, but she didn't have a carbon monoxide detector in her apartment. I found that disturbing, that it's not just her apartment. I'm sure the other ones too, so I don't know how that can be addressed. But you've got a lot of sick people, including myself. I was diagnosed with stage three ovarian cancer. I live ten miles from BD Bard. I hope that you would listen to us all today, and we plead with you to please do what you can, search your hearts. Because this company, no one's trying to put them out of business. We want them to correct the situation, the problem. If they can correct the problem, they got enough money to do so. There's other ways to sterilize equipment. There's other ways to sterilize equipment. So we're just asking for your commitment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Thomas Buckner, six fifty Plated Drive. Well, I reckon, uh, what I got to say is very important. They talking about, we gotta get off the second, they talking about making Newton beautiful? Well, before you make anything beautiful, you gotta express it up a little bit. Well, we need to buy some more tractors and bush hogs. I know, we just don't have enough to cut the whole county's grass. I mean, you can't make anything beautiful when you got grass up to your waist, and you got trash all in that waste. When they shut down the service centers, I thought that was gonna solve the problem on the bypass, all that trash up and down the road. But it ain't helped a bit. Eh, well, but anyway. Everybody talking about these cancers, you know, uh, there's nobody said nothing about, talcum powders cause cancer in women. Okay? My, my sister-in-law died back in January from cancer. I don't blame that on Bard, I don't think her husband did either. I mean, you can't blame all cancer. Nobody knows what causes cancer, or what don't cause cancer. And they ain't got no cure for it. They ain't never gonna have a cure for it. The man died years while back, about a week or so ago. He was a billionaire, and you know, if he, if they could have helped cancer, they would have, he'd still be alive, with all that money he had. But that's all I can say.
Thank you sir. Anyone, anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner, uh, Edwards. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm definitely gonna say that, um, I believe that in Newton County, we have recently occurred, or incurred an issue that, um, with our air systems that we do need to address. I am a firm believer that it does need to be addressed. I believe there needs to be some processes and protocols put in place to address it. And, um, from what, to my understanding, I guess the city is doing that. I think I will allow our chairman to kinda speak to say what direction this board will go, um, and how we, as the county, can do that. But I do think it's something we can be, that should be addressed. What I don't want our community to get caught up in stating that this is the only reason why we're having health challenges within our community. I believe this could potentially be for some cases. I think we, as a community, need to really start focusing on health and wellness. We need to start looking at nutrition. We need to start looking at, you know, cleansing our bodies from toxicity. When you look at dis-ease, it's all a matter of toxins. We don't live in a bubble. We can't get away from toxicity. It's everywhere you go in the world, it's in the air we breathe, it's in the water you drink, it's in the food that we consume. We understand that our fruits and vegetables are grown with herbicides, pesticides, insecticides. We can't get away from it. And so I don't want us to get so caught up, as citizens, to say that this one particular thing is causing the detriment of our community. Let's broaden our scope, let's broaden our perspective, and simultaneously deal with the matters at hand. And then also, at the same time, let's look at what we're doing as a community, to address the area of health and wellness. So I think we wanna, just kinda really look at the whole gamut, and look at it from a broader scope versus a narrowing scope. Not to say that the issue that we have doesn't need to be addressed, I think it does. And I believe that the county, we definitely wanna, you know, get it addressed as well. And, uh, we wanna address that concern. So with that, um, that's my stance when it comes to addressing that matter and addressing that issue. I can agree, you know, there are some things that we've gotta put in place to keep Newton beautiful. And I am a firm believer that, and I've said this before, we're not a perfect county. But I believe, right now, we are moving in a very positive direction. And for everybody that spoke tonight, every citizen that spoke tonight, I wanna say thank you. It is very important for us to not only get good feedback, but it's always good for us to get the not-so-good feedback, because that's what's going to make us better. And we were elected for the citizens, and so what the citizens tell us, that gives us a framework on how we can begin to work to really make a good quality of life for Newton County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you sir. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sent out an email a week ago Sunday. It was a very thorough email, and I sent it to several of you that are in the audience. I stand by a lot of, I stand by that, um, that information. I still believe that there's still a lot of information that we need to collect, a lot of data that we need to understand. And we will be vigilant as a board to make sure that we're getting that data and analyzing it properly. I would like to announce that, um, on September the tenth, those of us that have been waiting long for this Almond Road interchange, we're finally gonna get to meet with the D, with GDOT for a meeting at the Potter's House from four to six o'clock. It's predominantly for those property owners and those residents who use Crowell Road. But anyone is welcome to attend, because that interchange affects all of us. So I encourage you to be there.
Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You, you know, for the past, um, few weeks, I think I've been to just about not every meeting at the head, uh, concerning ethylene oxide. And not only did I go to the meetings and, and collect and listen to the information, I also went to the homes of the people who, who live here in Newton County, especially the ones who are affected, or they say who are affected in, in those areas. And recently, I learned that one of, one of the gentlemen's was just diagnosed with cancer. Well, he said, well, it may have happened somewhere else. Recently, I met the young lady who had twins and lost one of her childrens. And she don't know exactly what happened to it, in the apartments. Uh, recently, I went over to Sellers Grove and went to the house where the, the man and wife, who had had three cancer surgeries in just this year. And for, I think for us to, I said for me, I won't say us, to close my eyes on the fact that ethylene oxide causes cancer, they know it causes cancer. You know, when, I went on the board when BD Bard came here, but I know that, that they were supposed to be good neighbors. And a good neighbor, when they're doing something to make a lot of noise in your, they go out and, and try to do something for the neighbors, maybe put a tree or something up, put some trees or whatever, uh, 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 cut down the amount of noise they're making. Well, BD Bard is, is from what I'm learning from my constituents, are dying. So how you tell a person, say your father died from cancer, he didn't come to BD Dog Bard, if we know that the levels were high, two thousand eighteen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, it was just out there. We know now, uh, that some of the plants, uh, that have ethylene oxide, they close the plant down, so the, so the, it won't test so high. So are we, are we so naive that we believe everything that those people from up the road and Red Hen tell us? Well, I believe a lot of people are. We need to close that plant down until we find out what's going on. We need to have cancer screening for every person that's in the affected area without, and probably throughout Newton County and Walton County too. We need to pull that permit. Hey, look here, I'll do it if I could, but not by myself. We need to, those people, I bet you knocking those election times, I bet you knocking them folks down over there in Sellers Grove, I bet you knocking those down over there in, in Covington. Covering me, uh, say vote for me, but ain't no one saying it's closing the plant down till we get to the bottom of this. That's the reason why we up here, because y'all put us up here to work for you, not against you.
Commissioner Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let you know, and you asked the question, where does each person up here, each commissioner stand? I want you to know, I stand for additional testing outside in the county. And I think it needs to be done, I think it needs to go all the way, particularly in where I live, uh, have many folks in my neighborhood call me and say, can we get additional testing down here? And I live in the social circle area. But I would also suggest we follow J.C.'s recommendation to talk to Walton County, and let's do some intergovernmental agreement with them for some of that. So, just to get a clear picture of exactly what the emissions are in this area. And I don't know the science behind it, my son's a chemical engineer and he could tell me everything about it, but I don't know the science behind all this. But obviously, it's a carcinogen, and it's in the air, and just like you, I'm scared. It makes me pretty nervous. And I would like to, like to find out exactly what the amounts are and where it's at, and get, get as much as we can for testing. Now, I understand our chairman is going to speak on this subject here in just a few minutes. We've talked about different things with the city of Covington. And I think the chairman wants to talk about that, but that, I just wanted you to know where I stood on it.
Um, a couple of things. First, uh, the city of Covington is not pulling their trash out of, out of the landfill. The city of Covington is not, uh, pulling trash out of the, out of the landfill, that was false information given. Second of all, more important, you know, I had the opportunity to talk to just about all the commissioners and Lloyd. Um, I hadn't talked to Mr. Henderson, because I don't need to, I know what he's saying, he's out there leading. Uh, he, he doing what, he's a community activist, so he doing what he do. He's out there, uh, on the front row, on the front lines leading. But I, and just to, to let you guys know, um, there's not a commissioner up here that's not saying that they would support additional testing. So to put that information out is, is, is sad. Uh, the commissioner never said that. You know, my dad is, is, is at home now, with two lungs in his throat, that's cancer. You know, and it's something that we have to deal with as a family. But at the same time, to just throw Newton County name on a list, just to say our name is on the list, there has to be a plan in place. That is why I have been in contact, and I have been in continuous contact with the governor's office. If anything, uh, if, if the gas level is too high and it has to be shut down, it has to start right at the, at the head, to start from the governor's office. There's nobody on this board. And I'm not, listen, I'm gonna tell you. Um, I saw the emails, and I'm okay with email threats, I'm okay, I'm okay with that. Because I'm not a political person. I'm a person that cares about the community and people. And if we're not gonna put a plan in place, what's the need for me to go tell the, uh, the county manager, say, let's go put sixty thousand dollars to this? If we don't put a plan in place. To get in front of the governor, I think it's a sad mistake. To support, uh, additional testing, I think is a great thing. But I think we, you know, we have a top leader in this county, I mean, in this, in this state of, in this state of Georgia, who has came out and come up against the situation that we're facing right now, and the company that we dealing with. And a lot of you guys know that, you watch everything that goes on, from his office to this office, to that office over there, and to BD's office. And for us to jump in front of him, I think it's, I, I think it's wrong for us to do. So I support extra testing a hundred percent. But I also support a plan. You know, we, we, you know, and, and I hate to, I'm, and I hate to point out this young lady, but the young lady that came up with her daughter, if we do an extra testing, then ain't nothing done about it, we just doing extra testing. The governor has a plan. Whether you like him or not, he's our governor, he has a plan, and I think we should stand, stand, push behind his plan. And if he decide, hey, he don't wanna do anything, or he stopped his push, then I think, you know, you know, the county has to do what we ever, we can. But I, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm a little, a little disappointed, because, um, I know every one of these commissioners here, uh, support you guys a hundred percent. And, and I don't want you to make it seem like that we don't support you. And it's not just you, it's the community. This board supports this community, a hundred percent. And they have, and I believe they will still continue to do so. But, you know, I will poll the board, and if the board wanna, uh, put it on the agenda next, at the next board meeting to, uh, take a vote on it, then we'll do it. Ain't got no problem with that. But I will say today, and I will say tomorrow, to throw dollars at this without a plan is a big mistake. We just throwing dollars at it. We have to have a plan, there has to be a plan put in place. And I would tell the city of Covington, no, we have not teamed up with the city of Covington financially, we have not. That's, that's, that's not correct information. I wanna make sure we clear that up. But I, but I, you know, Covington, it's great that they test. There's not, there's nothing wrong with that at all, it's, it's wonderful. But what's the plan? What's, what's the plan in place other than testing? There gotta be something else, other than just testing. Just saying our name is on the list with Cobb County, with the city of Atlanta, with Smyrna. So, we are working with the governor's office to try to establish a plan. Yeah, and we do, I'm sorry, we do, no, it's, no, yeah, it's, I graduated, it's my time. We do, uh, with you, we do care. I care, I got family members. Everybody in here, if I, raise your hand if you have not been affected by cancer. Your fam, you have, raise your hand if you have not been affected by cancer. You, nobody in your family members ever had cancer? Yeah, so, so everybody in here has been affected by cancer in some shape, form, or fashion. So our heart goes out with you. I'm dealing with it right now myself. But I will poll the board next week, and if the board desires to put it on the agenda, we will put it on the agenda. Uh, we do have a need for executive session tonight, land acquisition, there would not be a vote. I seek a motion that we move into executive session. Thank you. We motion by Commissioner Henderson- The motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Mason, all in favor?